Hi, I'm Marilyn and I am Ms. Williams, the intern counselor.
Well, right now I'm the freshman and junior counselors, but I've been overseeing the seniors the past month or so.
And we also have a couple of more counselors that are not with us this evening. Um, Ms. Clemmer and Ms. Karsonoff, she will be the new uh sophomore senior counselor for the class of twenty-three and uh twenty-five. And uh she, uh Ms. Clemmer is also a school counselor intern and right now she is actually helping the sophomores.
Good, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Maurice Tyner, Mr. Tyner to our students. I am the dean of students, I'm new dean of students here at HT, also a Holy Trinity alum, class of two thousand thirteen. Um, super glad to be here and connecting with you all this afternoon, well, this evening now.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Nora Mahone, principal. I'm glad that you joined us this evening. And I'll be on the call if you have questions.
I'll sneak in really quick. My name is Ms. Fish. I'm a senior English teacher at HT. And I help a lot with the end of the year, senior week activities and prom, so I'm here to answer any questions you have about that at the end.
Good evening, everyone. This is Tim Bobb, president of Holy Trinity. So exciting to see you all, see you all at school, dropping your children off in the morning. And for this Zoom call, a lot of information will be given out tonight. But like we do for everything at Holy Trinity, let's start tonight with prayer and putting ourselves in the presence of God. In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Provenant God, we give you thanks for the Holy Trinity family. Dedicated parents, energetic students, committed faculty and staff members. Our model, the Brothers of Holy Cross, generous donors and board members. And our network of alumni around the nation and the world. Grant us the ability to see the good in all people. Give us the humility to see ourselves and others with clear vision, respect and love. Provide us your courage and compassion. So that together, we may meet the challenges of this school year with passion and resolve. For building a world that is just and humane. Oh Lord, thank you for the opportunity to meet tonight, to exchange ideas and plans. And to work together in your name. We ask for your grace through the intercession of Saint Joseph, patron of the Brothers of Holy Cross. Our founder, blessed Basil Moreau, our brother, Saint Andre Bissette. By the power of your holy cross, transform our hearts and minds. That in your name, we may transform the world. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. Thank you and I look forward to the meeting.
Okay, this evening I would like to start by congratulating the parents of Holy Trinity seniors. First things first, the senior year grades and activities matter. Make sure you are using Naviance. This is a student-driven process. Seniors should be finalizing their college list. Narrow down lists based on visits and online research. Make sure to create a balanced list. Don't exclude a college based on price alone. Search for scholarships and take the college fair seriously. Um, the college fair is coming up soon, which we'll tell you more about. Choosing a college, finding the right fit, academic does, does it have their intended major? Social, does the setting um appear to be urban, suburban or rural, and the size? And also financial, who is paying, what the scholarship does, um, what what scholarship does the school have to offer? And remember these needs balanced list, three types of schools. What they um want isn't always what they will need and quality over speed and quantity this fall. College list categories, reach. Academic credentials, grades, SAT, ACT scores and class rank. Fall in the lower end or even below the school's average range for students accepted um the previous year. Target match, academic credentials fall well within the school's average range for the most recently accepted class. There are no guarantees, but it's not unreasonable to expect to be accepted to several of your matched schools. Safety, academic credential, ex- credentials exceed the school's range for the average incoming freshman. You should be reasonably certain that you will be admitted to your safety schools. These should also be colleges you'd be happy to attend. The ACT uh scores, admission testing, many colleges have gone test optional for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three school year. I've had a lot of seniors come to me and ask me about this option and I always encourage them to speak to their parents. Um, first is your child's responsibility to know the colleges' testing policies, which um with me visiting the college uh on the website with many of the students, it is listed there as one of the criterias. Um, if they have the opportunity to test, they should, and many of them have tested, but they're not happy with their score, so they don't want to post those onto their or use them when applying for colleges. This is for scholarships uh to help boost their application as well. The twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three ACT and SAT testing dates are listed as follows. October the twenty-second is the first test that will be given this fall and registration starts September sixteenth. There will be following um ACT testing, but the um SAT, uh some of the students are wanting to take both tests. So the registration for the SAT has passed, but I do believe it's still open for the students to register if they would like to do so. Um, the test date for that is October first and then the uh continuing dates are listed below. I've had some of the seniors ask me if they could still take the ACT and or SAT. And I encourage them if that's something they want to do to move forward and do so, because the schools that they're applying to will still accept um their updated scores if they choose to submit those. The college fair, this is something that um the counselor Danny has been working on, Mr. O'Farrell. He's on the call um on the Zoom now. He has done such an amazing job with this college fair and um so we're excited about what the students will be presented with um coming the twenty-ninth of the September, which is Thursday. Um Danny, did you have anything you want to say about this?
Um, yeah, just to update the numbers on here, we have twenty-one colleges coming. Along with three accessory tables, I believe the military will be one. And then we have two other scholarship tables that we have gotten access to and people will be presenting those. Organizations like Bottom Line and ISAC will be there to help talk to students that want to seek out help with scholarships and financial planning.
Uh, the tips that we're suggesting for the students for the college fair is one of the most important things, which is for them to be prepared. And so introductions, have your child introduce themselves. It is very, very important that they take notes so that they can remember which school um they were visiting and what were some of the great things about it and some of the opportunities that are big, will be presented to them. So we're asking them to take notes about the colleges right after visiting their table. Um, gather information, because all of the universities and colleges there will have brochures, they'll have cards. Whether students can actually email them um and reach out to them for additional information if uh they didn't get a chance to ask questions while they were at the college fair. Or some of their um students um may not have uh had the opportunity to actually um get information from them that on a specific um just say a major that they're interested in, so they will have business cards available. And parent is so important that you're, you know who your students are emailing, because I've had some of the universities to reach out to me and some of the seniors, they've received text messages and emails from universities and they've asked me if this is legitimate. I'm individual reaching out to them. So for their safety, I would reach out to the university just to make sure that the person that I spoke to prior to the child, your child receiving a text or email um that that is the person that's reaching out to them and I would ask, include the child in the email with the counselor that I spoke to at the university to make sure that they are actually speaking to the individual that I came into contact with as well. And remember faces to pick up the business cards of any representatives who they speak to. This is so important because some of them have um specific universities they want to attend. And so just remembering who they spoke to would help them out a great deal. The college applications, start the college, start at the college's website. The school website will tell you how to apply to Common App, Coalition's app, through the school, et cetera. Important that your child completes their own application. Parents can help, but students should do all they can on their own. Your child's counselor can assist with applications if they have any questions. Again, I've reached out to a lot of the seniors and I have made myself available to them with college applications, with the Common App, with transcripts. Any questions or concerns they have, I've actually reached out to some of the universities just to ask what their requirements are. Because we do have quite a few students that are interested into getting into DePaul and University of Illinois and they worry about their GPA and I was able to reach out to some of the counselors to get clarification on that. And as I explained to the seniors that there, there's a school for everyone. And so the college application is very, very uh important for them to participate and do that on their own, because they will be asked questions by the counselor based on the information that they put on the application. The Common App application, and as you can see, there's a link for that um that your students can use and it can be used to apply for multiple colleges, over nine hundred colleges accept the Common App list of schools. Um, that's available on their website. All universities of Illinois schools are included. Extensive applications can request letters of recommendation and counselors' evaluation reports. It is long, if your students is going, if your students are going to apply through the Common App, they should start it now. Um, when you get, when the students go into the Common App, some of them are starting it, but they're not completing it. We have some students that have not um attempted the Common App. I'm encouraging them every day, I'm sending emails to your students, students, I'm reaching out to them. I'm letting them know that I am available. So as the parents, we would really like you to get involved with the students, especially if you know your students plan to attend college. Because we don't want them to miss out on opportunities that are available for them on Common App. One of the uh most important things that's available for the students is um early application. And so we'll talk more about that later and that's again done through the Common App application. Anything they need help with, we are here in the counselor's office to assist them. Types of college admissions, rolling admission, accept application all year long, typically six weeks after submitting your application. Um, regular decision is the most common application and the deadline is typically around January first. Um, admission decisions typical, typically you get your letters by March some as late as April. I apologize for going out of sequence here. And early decision is what I was talking about earlier, um. Can only use this method if the application for one college applications are contractedly binding. If accepted students must attend that college and the forfeit and forfeited all of their other apps. Deadlines typically no, typically are required to be submitted November first or November fifteenth. Admission decisions typically uh are sent to the students late December. And then there's early action priority, priority admission. Early action priority admission gives them the benefit of receiving early admission decisions, just like early decisions, but it's not non-binding. But it's non-binding. Deadline typically is November first or November fifteenth. Admission decisions typically by late December. Some schools have adjusted their due dates. Again, the early decisions is something for um students to take advantage of. I've worked with students in the past who've applied early prior to December first and so basically the first two weeks of December, they start receiving several letters of admission from universities. Along with merit-based scholarships, um which is another um perk about applying to the universities early. And I've shared this in the many meetings we've had with the seniors individually and in the group settings. Steps two to four are all done after your child submits their application. Counseling office will send an official transcript after your child has applied. Transcripts, release forms are available in the counseling's office, um or Ms. Savadra has those. The parent's signature is required if your student is under eighteen. Parent's signature is always required for the military. Danny, did you want to add anything with that?
Um, I'm always encouraging students to come check with their transcripts regardless, just to make sure that they're on track to graduate as well. So I think that is also important that the students come and talk to us just so they can have an idea of what their transcript is, because some of them don't even know what a transcript may be.
Great. Step three, test scores. Yes, many colleges have gone test optional this year. Test optional means that your child does not have to submit test scores as part of their application. List of colleges currently test optional, Holy Trinity does not send standardized test scores. It is your child's responsibility to do that. And as you can see, we have listed here where you can go to um actually get your SAT, ACT and AP test scores. I've met with several seniors and I haven't, have not been able to meet with some, but they gives, um they come to me on a regular basis with this question about how can they get their test scores? I'm only able to pull the transcripts for the students, but not the ACT, SAT or the AP test. So it's important that they're aware of this and that they obtain a copy for themselves. And they can share that with, um, they can actually upload it into the Common App if they would like to and they can share it with other universities that they are seeking to um s- submit applications to.
Um, as far as test optional goes, I feel like I should update some parents on this. Um, I've talked to some college counselors, it's kind of a double-edged sword right now. And the way I would best describe it is if you have any doubt about your child's test scores, I would not submit them, because it will do more harm than good, I think nowadays. Um, I had a college explain it to me that they prefer not to look at the test scores, they'd rather look at the student's full body of work. Um, because if you do post your test score, they are have, they have to be rigid about acceptance rates of test score. So a certain school that only accepts twenty-five for higher, they see that you have a lower than a twenty-five, they won't accept you, but if you go in without giving the test, they can look at the whole body of work instead. So if you have any doubt about your test score, I would not submit it at all.
So basically, we've gone over the um how to apply to college. Uh, the next step of requesting the transcript and sending test scores and gathering letters of recommendation. All of the above must be in your student's college's deadline. We share this with them, we have been doing so for the last four weeks. We meet with your students in the homerooms um every Wednesday. We've had uh meetings with them in the auditorium. We've shared maybe five or six videos with them or presentations. And we will continue to do so um this week, um and after this week, it will be every Wednesday. We are setting up, um, we've met with a young lady who is excited to work with HT students to help with um essay writing, so she's actually gonna introduce herself to the students on Thursday. She'll be back for a follow-up October fourth and after that she will come back twice a week. And the students will sign up and we'll present more information about that later. So we're doing everything we can um giving your students access to everything that's necessary for them to apply for college and have the tools that they need. Thank you. Okay, post-graduation options. We have community college, trades slash employment and military. Um, I think Danny and myself can um say that we've had students that come to us that are not interested in college, but they've mentioned that they were interested in trade school or military. And so we wanted to present some options to you as parents um that you can share with your students. Um, so that they can, that they know that there is an opportunity uh for movement after high school for all of them. And many of the students go to community college for up to two years after graduating. Students can um often transfer to a four-year college if they desire. Community college application should be filled out in April. To be accepted into the community college, your child needs to graduate high school. ACT is not required. But um the child can submit it if they like. We will have, I do believe Kennedy King is one of the junior colleges that will be attending the college fair. And um I have shared a lot of information with the students from some of the other local community colleges that are in Chicago that they can actually um visit and get information from as well. Some of the other opportunities that the students um will be, well, they, they do have available to you uh to them and the parents can assist with this. Um, which is the trade, some of the students indicated they wanted to go onto a trade, some of them have mentioned going to um, I think it's training for like uh emergency ambulance. There's a program at Malcolm X College that the students are interested in, where um ACT is not necessary and it's a program, I do believe it's maybe eight to sixteen weeks. This is something that a lot of the students have um spoke about, so that's something great that uh the parents can talk to the students about. If your child is planning to go into a union or employment, they still need to do their research. They should talk to family members, which is we, what we're encouraging the students, because we can't make that decision for them, but we can only provide them with some information based on what they tell us that they want to do. Um, the military is also another option. Some of them have spoke about going, spoke about going into the military. So the military branches will require things like transcripts, grades and confirmations. Um, parents should always be involved in these decisions and will need to sign off on anything that that is official. So we're making a lot of things available to the students, because we want everybody to have an amazing opportunity after they graduate. But just knowing where they're gonna um go the next step after high school is there, some of them are kind of anxious about it and I'm just trying to reassure them that this is a fun opportunity and they should tap into all the resources so they know what it is that they want to do and they're not forced into a situation. College visits, a quick note from the dean um about attendance regarding the college visits. Um, if the students go on a college visit, they will need to provide official proof, not just a brochure. To let, um, basically as an excused absence. The absences are not officially counted against them. Some of the students are interested in college visits, they've shared with us that they would like to go on the visits and we encourage that, because it's very important that the students um are able to see uh a visual of where they will be attending school and they'll be able to meet some of the other students on, uh as well on the campus. So this is something that we're encouraging them to do and again, as long as they bring official proof um that they were at that college visit, it's acceptable for us and it'll be excused absence. FAFSA, this is the fun part, free application for federal student aid. The FAFSA application opens up October first. All families should complete FAFSA regardless of family income. Many schools will not award merit-based aid without it. Families should complete this as early as possible, money will run out. Um, I encourage students to do this as soon as possible. This also affects their um college application. The money does run out fast and so those students that qualify for it, they, or just the FAFSA application is required regardless. And I encourage the students, it must be done with the parents. The parents have to log on, they have to have their own special login password, the students have to have theirs. So both the parent and the student must do this together and this is something that the student will have to do every year that they attend college. So it's important that they get used to doing it now and they get accustomed to the deadlines. Scholarships are also available to the students. Um, there are academic merit-based scholarships, these are based on the student's application. Uh, the university's website, many of the schools will have major-specific scholarships um that the students can check. College scholarship search engines, students create profiles and are matched with specific scholarships. And a couple of the scholarship search engines we've listed below that we consider that are safe, that we've actually um probably looked into ourselves. So this is something great for the students. I also, throughout the week, I am always sending the students tons and tons of websites for scholarships. I'll even open it up so they have access to the actual scholarship itself. Again, it's up to the student to uh review it and see what else is needed for them to proceed to apply for the scholarship. Parents role, fill out the FAFSA. The students cannot do it alone. They need the parent, because they need the parent's income information, they need the parent's job title, the parent's bank information. They need to know, they'll ask questions like how many people are living in your home? How many children go to daycare? How many college students? So it's questions that the parents definitely have to answer. Colleges withhold scholarships, even merit-based scholarships if FAFSA, FAFSA is not filled out. Money will run out, so do it right away. Help send the test scores, remind your student of their own deadlines. This is so, so, so important. That you guys uh make sure that the students stay on top of this. We're giving them the information and we're encouraging them every week to do it, but we need the parents to jump in and help us to make sure that they are actually doing what's needed for them to go to uni, uh to go to college. If you have any questions, if you're unsure of anything, you don't understand, don't hesitate to ask your student's counselor. Again, I am Ms. Williams and I am the interim senior counselor. And I'll be around the rest of the year to help this new senior counselor that's coming on board.
All right, this is where I jumped in. Thank you so much, Ms. Williams. I know you guys have had a plethora of outstanding information thrown at you tonight and I'm gonna just throw a little bit more in there, I apologize. Um, but I know we always get a lot of questions about this and I want to give you all the info that we have as soon as possible. Um, again, my name is Ms. Fish, I'm a senior English teacher at HT. Um, and I do help a lot when it comes to our end-of-the-year senior events. Um, things specifically like prom, which I helped with last year. Um, so I'm hoping I can give you all the details and answer any questions you have. So here are some really important dates that we have going right now. Um, prom is set for Friday, May nineteenth. Location is still to be decided. Um, we're looking at a few banquet halls, um including the one that prom was at last year, that's kind of our top pick right now. Um, we have a few places, um, and see to figure out um what dates work or which of our dates work with them. Um, so that we can get that settled, but hopefully we'll have a final answer on that here for you in the next month or so. Um, then as things continue, you'll know we have our robing ceremony, which is Friday, May twenty-sixth. A really wonderful day for our seniors. And then we get into senior week. Um, at this point, uh seniors will have finished their finals, um since they do their finals a week earlier than the rest of the HT uh class. Uh, so we have senior week, which starts May thirtieth, which is a Tuesday, um because we do not have school on that Monday. So it's May thirtieth through June second. So far, we have a few great things lined up. Um, some of them are similar to what we did last year. So we have a fancy luncheon. Um, usually Mr. Bob is in attendance. I don't know if he's been recruited uh this time around. Um, uh, so a place downtown or somewhere by the water, um, so we're looking at some really great options for that. Um, last year we did a Six Flags trip, um and it was an overnight one. The students didn't really seem to have a great time with how late it was, so we are looking into a Six Flags day trip instead. So it'll be something during the day. Um, we go into groups and have buses and all that sort of stuff, so that's gonna be a great option. And then um a lot of the students wanted to have a chance to decorate their graduation caps. Um, so we are considering a uh at-school sort of decorating, we'll have decorations and pizza and the kids can hang out in the cafeteria sort of at their last chance. Um, to be in the school before that Saturday, June third is the day of HT's twenty, class of twenty twenty-three graduation, which I know it seems so far away, you guys, but it flies by before you know it. Um, so the last thing, right now we are trying to sort of just predict some costs. Um, we know, you know, we don't want big expensive things sneaking up on us. So right now we are predicting the cost for all of the senior week events and prom, so everything altogether will be about three hundred dollars. and prom, so everything altogether will be about three hundred dollars. Um we are gonna offer various packages. For instance, if your student is not interesting in attending prom, but they do still want to go to the senior week events, we would have a package where you could maybe get a small discount for going to all the senior week events. Um maybe they just want to go to prom. Um obviously, you can pick and choose sort of à la carte. And kind of do that, but we do want to come up with ways for maybe you to save a little bit of money if your student does go to all of the things. Um and we also, the school is going to institute some payment plans for those who'd like to sort of pay this over the course of the next couple of months to make sure, again, it's not just a surprise big thing at the end of the year. Um please feel free to contact me, um Ms. Fish. Uh we'll have a whole contact page at the end of the slides with everyone's emails, including my own. Um if you have any questions about senior week activities, um we hope to really update you once we have um more very specific prices on things. Um but we just wanted to give you a heads up now. Uh see some questions uh rolling in, and we'll try to get those answered. Um the boat cruise, we've had some issues with safety on the boat cruise um in the past. And we also are limited, um just by being a smaller school, um we could definitely look into it as an option. Um but unfortunately, just because we are a smaller class, um usually only about a hundred people. We hit a hundred last year, and that was really impressive. Um but most of these require a hundred and fifty or two hundred people for it to be within our budget. Um the prom last year was at Stardust Banquets on Milwaukee. Um they have another location that is a little bit bigger. Um I'm blanking on the name on it just a second, um but it's also owned by the same company. Um it's a really beautiful location. The seniors last year, it was almost a landslide vote on the location for that one. Um so they really seemed to like it, but again, we are looking at a few other options. Um we have talked to a few of the seniors about what they would like to do. Um they seemed very interested in the Six Flags trip. They were adamant that they did not want to do the overnight one, that they wanted to do a daytime one, which is why we made that change. Um they are the ones who recommended the cap decorating to me, so that's where we got that idea. And um the lunch one is just kind of a repeat thing. We will, of course, be reaching out to them to know some of the other options. But again, because we only have like really three or four days, those fill up pretty quickly. Um so we'll be reaching out to them, um but we did actually get a lot of these ideas from our current senior class already. Great questions. Thank you.
Again, um as we mentioned earlier, the H T contacts would be Ms. Monahan, the assistant principal, and she's head of student services. Mr. Tender, dean of students, Mr. O'Farrell, class of twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-six. Ms. Karzinoff, class of twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-five. Ms. Klimmer, the school counselor intern, Ms. Williams, myself, school counselor intern, and Ms. Fish, who just spoke, the senior English teacher. One of those parents will be attending the college fair that we're having. Um she's representing Kennedy King College, and she wanted me to share with the parents this evening that um it is a rolling admission process as well. And they do take the A C T and S A T placement test scores, and G P A is not needed for new students. Again, this is a junior college that's in Chicago, Kennedy King College, or it may say City Colleges of Chicago. So if you're registered with the City Colleges of Chicago, they have Earl Washington, Kennedy King, and I do believe a couple more that I'm not too familiar with. But um the person from Kennedy King will be at our college fair, so she'll be able to provide this information to the students that are interested in going to a junior college. Thank you so much for sharing that information. Again, please know that we're sharing information with your students every week. Um so we need your help to help the students to get to where they need to be for their college planning and for their college acceptance.
Another question we have is, will students get one-on-one time from counselors to help with apps and scholarships?
Um we're actually doing that now. I reach out to all of the seniors via email. And I have them to set up times to meet with me. I give them a six-hour window, and they're able to select the time they want to meet with me. And they're welcome to come back more than once. And when they are in front of me, I, the first question I ask them is how is your college process going? Are you attending college? Um have you started to apply? Do you have the Common App? So I'm reaching out to them on a daily basis. Um weekly, again, we're in their homerooms, just staying in front of them, making them aware, trying to push them to be on top of it. We've offered to help them with any application process, any research for universities. Um I've even encouraged some of the students to go do office, um not office visits, to go and do college visits. I've actually pulled up the co- um the visit information for the students and sent that to them via email as well, just to kind of help them along, because some of them are not sure um how to find the information. So we're reaching out to them every single day. Some of the students will respond, some of them won't. Um next week, I'll start pulling them out of class individually, one-on-one, just to make sure that I'm able to uh be of assistance to them um and provide the information that they're needing. To add another thing for the parents, because this senior year is a very crucial time for the students. As we meet with the students weekly, we will provide uh the parents with uh information in the newsletter addressing what we spoke to your student about each week, so that you have that information and you can be included in the process as well.
Alright, I think we can wrap this up. If no one has any further questions. Thanks for attending, everyone, and thanks for all the nice notes you've written about how informative this was. It was a lot of fun. Like Ms. Fish said, we will post this and share it with all of you. And anyone who wasn't able to attend today can view it. We'll make sure it's sent out to all senior families.